It is six o'clock. I will call the City of Alleghen City Council meeting to order for Monday, October 27th, 2025. Can I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Councilmember Westover?
Present.
Councilmember Walker?
Here.
Councilmember Canales?
Here.
Councilmember Hooker?
Here.
Mayor Protem Hands?
Present.
Mayor Paragel?
Here.
You have a quorum.
All right, if you are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, agenda item number four is approval of agenda for A, approval of the regular council meeting agenda for October 27th, 2025. And you do have an amended agenda in front of you. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion. Sorry, I'll make a motion that we approve the amended agenda.
Support.
All right. Any questions on that? No. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Agenda item number five A is approval of the regular council meeting minutes from October 13th, 2025. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second. All right, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion on agenda item five A? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Five B, approval of the special council meeting minutes from October 21st, 2025.
Make a motion to approve the special council meeting minutes.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on five B? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving down to agenda item seven A is first reading of ordinance 532 regarding the rezoning of parcels 35 dash, sorry, 03-51-200-016-00 and 303-51235-00400 from MDR Medium Density Residential District to APUD Planned Unit Development District and preliminary review of a 38-unit mixed-density residential development and schedule a second reading and public hearing for November 10th.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder for city council, whenever we do ordinances, amendments to our zoning text or a zoning map, it is a two-step process at the city council level. The first step is tonight where we have a first reading and we schedule a public hearing. And then the second step is at November 10th, when you hold the public hearing, then you take action on the ordinance. Before you tonight is a request to rezone what is commonly known as the Girl Scout parcels over near the Highland-Woecott Riverside neighborhood. This neighborhood is on the north side of town, just south of Babylon Road and just west of River Street. This land is currently owned by the City of Alleghen. For the past, you know, dozen, 20 years or so, the city has tried to develop this parcel. We've had a handful of proposals make their way to the drawing board, including an opportunity for Calumsey Valley Community College. That didn't get off the ground, a resort community, like time share rentals, that didn't get off the ground. A handful of residential developments that never got off the ground. And then this evening, we have what I'm considering a much more focused effort to develop the property. So it blends in with the larger vision for the City of Alleghen when it comes to housing, as well as preserving the natural features of the Calumsey River. The city went out to bid about a year and a half ago to develop this property. Developers submitted it. Their total number of parts, the development is going to include, I think, like 46, 48 single-family houses. That received some pushback. And as it received pushback, that developer withdrew their plan. During that process, the city receives several inquiries from developers. It is a, you know, regular occurrence for city hall to receive these inquiries from developers. We have conversations, we show them land. Alleghen Development Company, which is led by Patrick Cappinga, was one of those developers that reached out to us. We showed them some parcels throughout the city. This one caught their eye and they submitted a letter to the city council inquiring on purchasing this. City council, you entered into a due diligence agreement with the developer to purchase it with some requirements that, you know, it is developed in the manner of the site plan that you see on the right side of the screen, that the lower lands are dedicated to the, or transferred to the Alleghen Conservation District for an outdoor learning lab, which is also known as a nature area, walking trail, interpretive science benches, et cetera. This development then went through the development approval process at the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission reviewed this. There is a typo in the report that you see. It says at their September 15th meeting, that would have been their October meeting, not the September 15th one. So I apologize for that typo right there. That would have been on October 20th. The Planning Commission reviewed the proposed ordinance, which is the zoning map change, as well as the preliminary review for the development. And they held a public hearing at that meeting. Several individuals spoke against the rezoning and one individual spoke in favor of the rezoning. After reviewing the staff memo, understanding the master plan that calls for this land to be mixed-density residential, the Planning Commission has voted unanimously to recommend that city council approve this rezoning request and development plan. The developers in the audience this evening, if city council has any specific questions for Mr. Cappinga, the mayor, as the person that oversees the meetings, you have the right to encourage or invite people to come to the microphone to speak. If the council has questions for the developer, he is in the audience. If the council has questions of staff, I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you. Does council have any questions for, is it Cappinga, Mr. Cappinga? Any questions from council? Would you like to come up?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Hey. Hi. I don't, I don't know about necessarily for you, but I could have gone to the, to the city website. But what were the reasons brought up that people were against this? What were those reasons? And then the one that was for?
Sure, so the mayor and the council member Westover still on the planning commission. So correct me if I don't recall this correctly. They were against the increased traffic that is going to happen there. They're against the density as compared to the density in the current area, that current neighborhood. And they were concerned about the loss of the vegetation that was going to occur on the upland portion of this development.
Those were the three, I would say.
The one that was for it is the understanding that we are at a place where we are in the short 6,200 homes in our county. We are still in a housing crisis. We do not, we do not have enough housing being built, especially in the City of Alleghen. It was a downtown business owner that was excited to see new development coming, new customers to, that could be, you know, supportive of his store and his endeavors that are occurring downtown.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Cappinga from council? No. All right. Thank you.
I'll stay here in case you change your mind.
All right, thank you. I will accept comment right now from the public if they would like to come up to the podium and speak on the Girl Scout property or former Girl Scout property.
Matthew Pivolar, 329 Monroe, but I'm the trustee for 202 River View Park. I just want to, because I'm not going to rehash the stuff I did at the planning meeting. Joel kind of covered that there, the three main topics about the vegetation, the trees, the traffic and the density. I'm just put forth that you're using the wrong approach. You're using a 20th century urban planning model and economic model to solve 21st century problems. In 1980, the population of Alleghen was 4,547 people. There were no vacant buildings downtown, except for the Little Triangle Building. You could buy everything from your tux to go to the prom, your fursuit, paint, jewelry, you name it. It was a vibrant city in 1980. In the year 2000, we'd increased by almost 300 people and had vacancies everywhere. By 2020, we increased to an all-time high of 5,222 people and had more vacancies than we've ever had. Adding more people to the city is not solving the problem. And in fact, it exacerbates the problem. What makes Alleghen unique is its community. It's its size. You can turn it into another bedroom community like Atsego or Plainwell or Wayland, and then why would anybody come? We're no different than they are. And they're on the main drag. They're on 131. What draws people here was what made us unique. Adding more people is what you used to do in the 20th century, whenever a downtown district was failing. That doesn't do any good now. It's a whole new economic model. Regarding the housing issue, we actually have 100 less people now than we did in 2020. At three people per home, there's 33 fewer families here than we had just five years ago. So I have a hard time believing that the city has a housing shortage when we have 33 fewer families here and roughly 400 fewer students in the high school than we did when I was here. So I'm not sure that, you know, adding more people is going to, or sorry, adding another development is going to solve a housing problem that probably doesn't exist. But I don't think just running out and adding more people to the city is going to solve the budget problem. In 2020 through 2025, money has been incredibly tight from what I can see. And you've had more people here than you've ever had in history. So it's not people or money coming in that's the problem. There's something else if you can't make ends meet. Thank you.
Is there any other comments?
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
My name is Brandon Gumm. I work at, wow, I live at 524 Marshall Street. To all, all respect to what was just said, I do want to say that we are in a housing crisis, not just in Alleghen, but in our county as well. The major challenge that we face is a lack of housing units across the board. Whether that's affordable housing units all the way to larger housing units. But the major crisis that we have really is in the middle, where you have a lot of large units in Alleghen and a lot of folks that can't afford to keep those units up to the standard that even they would, they would want to live. And so we do need additional housing units in Alleghen. This project, I think, is a great example of how you start to do that. I wish that there was, you know, maybe even more density, but I am happy that we do have a conservation, like outdoor learning lab. I think that's a good component as well. As far as like an economic model for, like, how do we start to solve the problems that we have? You know, really, I think the challenge is the lack of money that households have in spending in downtown businesses and the difficulty we have in recruiting businesses that people want to come to over and over and over. So certainly adding houses isn't hurting us in that it's actually going to help us. So I just wanted to say those few things, say that I'm in favor of this. I'm excited that we'll have new neighbors to call, you know, neighbors in Alleghen and that we'll have folks who will spend money downtown. And I think that there's a lot of positives that come from this. And I just want to rebuke the economic, you know, model that was just mentioned because I don't, you know, I have a master's in urban sustainability and resilience. I've never come across any literature that says anything about adding more people means that you're hurting your community. So obviously, we want, you know, great folks to move into those homes. And yeah, I'm excited for this project, so I just want to voice my excitement for it. So that's all.
Is there any other comments tonight on agenda items seven A?
Alex Wilking, 211 Locust. So I spoke in favor of this at planning. And I won't rehash much of that. Joel covered it just fine. The one thing that I've always talked about with housing projects in the city that I want to make sure that you all consider is that we're dangerously close to a resident threshold to garner a liquor license, a civic liquor license for the city that would go for the Griswold, which would go a long way in making that building more sustainable for the city and making events at the Griswold more enjoyable and more profitable. And so that's something to consider when you look at housing projects, as we're pretty close to that. I think we're less than 200 away, Joel, if I remember correctly. Residents from being, meeting the threshold for that through the MLCC. So something to consider as we look at projects like this. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none. Does this require a motion, Joel, to
Yes.
schedule the public hearing?
Yes.
All right. Can I get a motion, please, to schedule the second reading and public hearing for November 10th?
I will make a motion that we schedule a second reading and public hearing for November 10th, 2025.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any other discussion amongst council? All right, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving down to seven B, which is a request to deny the rezoning of parcels 0351, 105, 185, 00 and 0351, 105, 186, 00. The Village Express Gas Station and County Overflow Parking Lot from CBD Central Business District to the GC General Commercial District.
Thank you, Mayor. The owner of the Village Express Gas Station, Sterling Properties, recently applied to the City of Alleghen to rezone both their gas station parcel and the county-owned overflow parking lot parcel just to the south of their property from our central business district zoning to our general commercial district zoning. For a refresher for city council, central business district is a commercial district that allows for mixed uses with a focus on creating pedestrian atmospheres. It specifically prohibits automobile-related services. Where our general commercial district is focused on providing commercial opportunities for the region with a focus or an allowance for automobile-related services. So that's like the main separation between these two commercial zone districts. As part of this request, they will, they will be coming in to apply for a special use permit from the Planning Commission to expand their gas station by putting up a couple more gas pumping islands, as well as a three-bay car wash, a self-service car wash, a handful of vacuum cleaners, et cetera. The Planning Commission, when they reviewed this, looked at the current master plan, which was adopted by city council on 2023, looked at the downtown master plan, which was adopted in 2020, and they came to the conclusion that this proposed rezoning request was in conflict with the city's vision for this area. The public hearing again is a typo in this staff report, so I apologize for that. The public hearing occurred on October 20th. At that time, the Planning Commission unanimously passed a motion recommending that city council deny this rezoning request. And consultation with our city attorney, it's determined that since the Planning Commission is recommending the denial, city council, you have the authority to go out and just deny it at the first reading and not have to schedule a second reading or a public hearing on this request. Any comments for staff? And I do not see the applicants in the audience this evening.
I don't see any comments from council. I will go ahead, because I know there was a lot of people at the planning meeting that wanted to comment on this. So I will open it up for any public comment on this agenda item. If you have any, please approach the podium.
Hi, Brandon Gumm again. So I am very excited about this lot, this parking lot. And I know that you all know that the downtown of Alleghen is fairly built out when it comes to its real estate. There's not a lot of real estate opportunities for the future. So, you know, the Planning Commission, we kind of saw it as a choice between either extending the type of development that you see off of the Major Thoroughfare to the north or extending the, what really kind of makes Alleghen unique, which is our downtown core, and really helping support a walkable environment with businesses that, you know, help all of us enjoy our downtown even more. So obviously, in addition to it not being in, in alignment with our vision and our master plan, I also think just the use of the application, you know, I would encourage you guys to think of this property as a strategic opportunity for the city. We don't have a lot of development opportunities. This is one that we could leverage to make a big difference in our downtown. And so you're, the, you know, I had a long conversation with the county administrator, Mr. Sorrow, after the planning commission. He's told me that the process that they've gone through is purely based off of the dollar figure that they get from the real estate transaction. So this application, the reason why it's coming to you, my understanding is because it did have a high value for the sale of the property and not necessarily that it's good for our community. So I do think that it's important that you look at these applications as they come through planning and to you as like, does this fit like a strategic vision for the city? Because you have the power to really kind of decide to a large extent, kind of what is happening in this property despite it being owned by the county. So the fact that the first application was such a high value is a really good sign for us. It means they got a really good offer. So that, that means that other offers could potentially come as well. We know that there was more than one offer in the initial, the initial deals that they were trying to work with. So if you do deny this, like we're recommending on the planning commission, that means that the county will have to go back and be a little bit more strategic in how they start to work other potential, you know, transactions. We could get a better use out of it as well that aligns with our master plan. So yeah, I definitely encourage you to look at this property strategically and deny this initial application and be encouraged that it was such a high value and know that there's hopefully going to be more opportunities in the future that better align with our master plan.
Any other comments?
I would just like to note, from the DDA perspective, we recommended to planning commission that they recommend denial of this application. So basically, from the ground up, every level till it's gotten to you has said, we don't really approve of this use for this lot. It does not fit your master plan or the downtown master plan. And going forward, we would like to see the county be a little bit more And going forward, we would like to see the county be a little bit more forward-thinking in the way that they handle the partnership with the city in regards to accepting bids on this parcel. And we hope that you deny it and send that message to them. Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none. Was there any comments for staff on this agenda item?
I have a question. The parties looking to buy this, were they aware that this could end this evening? Or is there a way to appeal it if it does end this evening for them?
So, thank you, Parker. Yes, they do know that it could end this evening with a denial at the city level. In the state of Michigan, you can always appeal to the court system.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions of staff from council? All right, can I get a motion to deny the rezoning of the two parcels?
I'll make a motion to deny the rezoning of the two parcels.
Support. Right, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion or comments council members would like to share? All right, seeing none. All right, well, go ahead. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. Agenda item number, number nine is the next agenda item. That is public comment for items not on the agenda tonight. If you have any public comment, please approach this podium and state your name if we don't already know it.
Hello again, Alex Wilkning, two eleven locust. I am coming tonight in my official capacity as the executive director of the Alligan County Food Pantry. So as we're aware now, I hope, November SNAP benefits are unlikely to be distributed in the state of Michigan or any state for that matter that's not using emergency funding to fund that program. We're going to get absolutely hammered in November, just like every single food bank and every single food pantry in the county and in the state. So I just want to make that known to anybody who's watching or listening out there and to council that we are going to struggle. We're talking internally about trying to add availability to our schedule in November to try to bridge the gap left by SNAP. Right now, we are a once-a-month food pantry. We're talking about opening it up to be once a week in November and just brunting the cost to do that. But we are a small organization that's pretty much entirely funded by grants and singular golf outing. So that will be hard to do. I know that there are some stats out there about how for every one meal a food bank gives out, SNAP benefits gives out nine. And so it's going to be really hard for our local nonprofits to keep up with that kind of demand. So I just wanted to make everybody aware that that is an active issue in our community. And if anybody wants to donate or wants to spread the word, or if you're watching out there and you want to get involved, cash is always good, but so is food. So canned goods, pastas, mac and cheese, the simplest of all simples, staples, bread, peanut butter, milk, eggs. That's really what we're trying to do. And if you have any questions, my email is director@alligancountyfoodpantry.com. You can email me directly. I'll monitor that and respond accordingly. Yeah, so just wanted to make the community aware that we're going to do our best, but it's going to be hard for everybody. And it does mean that kids will go without food in November, unfortunately. So, thank you.
Any other public comment for tonight?
Now that you voted to not approve the zoning for that parking lot next to the gas station, a number of people at the, at the Planning Commission meeting, myself included, were a little confused on what's the next step? The city controls the zoning, but the county controls the property, if I understand correctly. It would be nice if you, you could, before the evening's out, sort of explain what the next step is, what the plan is for that. Is there a risk that the people who own the gas station are just going to buy it and sit on it for another 10 years? It's been vacant for as long as I can remember, since they tore down the grain reed there back in high school. So it was just unclear, like what, what happens next?
Are you fine if we go ahead and talk about that right now, Joel? I, like you said, they couldn't, they can appeal it. I thought that the buyers, the, there was a clause in there. I mean, yeah, when I looked at the agreement, that I thought they just, I don't know if you know anything, Joel?
Yeah, so if someone wants, I mean, the zoning currently is our central business district zoning. So it has to be a use that currently is allowed right now for any new uses. Existing uses can continue as legal non-conforming uses. So if the county wants to move forward and sell it to these, you know, to Sterling Properties, and if Sterling Properties just wants to sit on it and use it as a parking lot, that's a legal non-conforming use, that is an option that they could do. I will be reaching out to the county as a representative from the city to let them know what the action was and to once again offer the city's willingness to work with the county to create a vision for that, to go out for proposals, to see what proposals come in, to get a use that benefits, you know, this immediate, immediate community of our downtown Alligan.
And that is something that you have done in the past with them when this first went up for sale, so.
So we will revisit that again.
They might still be in due diligence because they had this in September and they had 90 days of due diligence. So they could easily probably back out as well, depending on what they want to do.
Yeah, the buy-sell agreement is in the packet. And so if you want to go look at that online, you can see that buy-sell agreement in the council packet for tonight. I think the only thing redacted is the purchase price. Yeah, yep. Any other public comment for tonight? All right, seeing none. We will move down to 11A, city boards, commissions, and area agencies. 11A1 is review of the October 2025 Positively Alligan Minutes. Council member Hooker.
Thank you. So we reviewed the Hooten Halloween or whatever, Hooten Howl? Yes. It was found to be a very successful event. If you did not do the ghost tour, it, well, not sold out, but they had to add more tours. And it was a good, like really good feedback. And there is plans to definitely go forward with it again next year. And it will be the first weekend in October. We then reviewed the festive Fridays. And I can't really think of anything that's different about that, but those will be starting December 5th with the parade and be three Fridays. And then we reviewed, believe it or not, New Year's Eve, 2026. And there we discussed, there's a private donor that would like the fireworks to be continued, provided they pay for it. And so we did approve that if this donor wishes to have fireworks and pay for them every year, we will allow fireworks to come back. And then we reviewed the, the street, the, the road repairs and sidewalks that will be done over the summer. I think that's it, right? Yeah, all right.
All right. Thank you. Any questions to, no? All right. 11A2 is review of the October 2025 Planning Commission minutes and council member Westover.
Thank you, Mayor. The Planning Commission meeting consisted of a public hearing, application for the rezoning of the parcels at the county overflow lot. That was reviewed and discussed and poured upon. And then the other main item was a public hearing, application for the rezoning of the Girl Scout property. That was reviewed and discussed and moved on to the city council as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Any questions for council member Westover? All right, 11D1 is a request to adopt resolution 25.33 to appoint Jeff Maury as the streets administrator for the city of Alligan.
Thank you, Mayor. With the impending resignation of Doug Cosman as DPW director, I have gone ahead and appointed Jeff Maury to fill his shoes as the DPW director starting November 1st. As part of that process, I have to, the city has to appoint a streets administrator in accordance with MDOT regulations. This street administrator has the duties of all street improvements, maintenance, traffic operations, oversight of off-site, off-street parking and construction, repair of street lights. Essentially, this person becomes the local MDOT contact or the local contact for MDOT issues, as well as submitting our annual Act 51 maps to MDOT. So I need you to adopt this resolution tonight so we can get it into MDOT before November 1st. Any questions for staff?
Can I get a motion to adopt resolution 25.33?
I will make a motion to adopt resolution 25 dot 33.
Support.
Okay, moved and supported. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 11D2 is a request to approve PO 26 dash zero eight four zero to Cronk Services LLC in the amount of $41,700 for lawn care services at Oakwood Cemetery.
Thank you, Mayor. Currently, the city contracts with Cronk Services to be our lawn care company for Oakwood Cemetery. The current contract expires after the spring cleanup in 2026. Staff has been pleased with the work they've done under the current contract and we'd like to extend it for one more year. Cronk Services has agreed that they also would like to extend it for one more year. So that's what this is, action is doing tonight is by approving this PO, we are setting aside $41,700 for one more year of maintenance, lawn maintenance at the Oakwood Cemetery.
Is that the same cost that it is?
Yes, that is at the same cost of what we have in the current contract.
Okay.
Joel, how many years was the original contract?
So the current contract, I believe, was for three years is typically how we set up our contracts for lawn maintenance at the cemetery. Historically, we've, we've always had kind of an issue out at the cemetery, but for the past three years, I don't think of one complaint I got from the public on the maintenance out there. So I was very happy to hear that Cronk wanted to continue the lawn maintenance.
It's been a lot better since they have, yes, yep. It seemed like it was all the time, especially on public spaces. People would bring feedback they had heard about it, so, so that is good. Any other questions of staff? All right, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve PO 26 oh eight four oh.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any other discussion amongst council? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We'll move down to 11E1 is a request to approve accounts payable and payroll.
It's requested that the city council approve accounts payable in the amount of $702,919.04 and payroll in the amount of $139,594.60 for a total disbursement of $842,513.64. Motion to approve.
Support.
All right, so moved and supported. Is there any questions of staff?
Yeah, I do have just a few quick ones. The dues for the MML, other than the training we had, what, what, what do we get for those dues, the 4,000?
Yeah, so the Michigan Municipal League is our lobbying firm for all issues in Lansing. So they represent the city amongst many other cities 24/7 and addressing a variety of things that may be coming in front of Lansing.
What was the last thing we used them for though, for the city, this city?
This city?
Yeah.
Yeah, most recently in the current budget, they were looking to cut our state revenue sharing. And so the Michigan Municipal League organized, Michigan Municipal League organized a letter-writing campaign that the city, the city manager, you know, partook in to get us, you know, to make the statement very clear. Before that, it was when the, every day it's something. So recently was a push in the state law to copy Arizona's law as it relates to Airbnbs to completely deregulate Airbnbs. And if you own a house, you can do whatever you want with it. And there's no inspections, no nothing. You have to treat it like a single-family home like they do in Arizona. And then, you know, they led the fight on that. They represent the city on federal funding, ARPA funding, solar panels and local government regulations. So, yeah, there, there is a very well-oiled, you know, organization that we work with.
We also use them for wage studies and, and things of that nature. And they, that fees covers that as well, and we use that several times a year.
Yeah, so the wage studies, just to add a little bit more to that. So we, we did a compensation study about five years ago where we brought a firm in. Every year, MML sends out a survey asking for local municipalities to submit their wages for different positions. And we participate that and that, and we do refer to that quite often.
Don't they also have example ordinances and the like that you can log into?
Yep, they also have example ordinances. They have example legal opinions. They are your 1-800 HELP DESK if your local attorney can't figure something out for you.
Any other questions? Okay, so we have a motion and a support on the table. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 11E2 is a review of the September 2025 revenue and expenditure report.
Yeah, just very quickly, between the months of October and May, we share with council our monthly R and E reports. June, July, and August and September, we're in the busy of closing out the year, reopening the year. So we're focused more on the audits that we're doing at that time. But this is just something that we include in your packets, if you guys recall. And you're going to start seeing these for the next few months. So if you have any questions, even though you approve AP every single meeting, this is just another layer of transparency for council and for the public because it's in the packets that is available to the public. So you can see, you know, the individual, you know, condition or status of each of our line items. And if you have questions, you can always reach out to Tracy and I will sit down and meet with you outside of meeting time. If you have questions right now, we can try to answer them for you.
Any questions tonight for staff on this agenda item? All right. We'll move down to 11E3 is a request to approve the FY 2027 budget schedule for the 2026 calendar year.
All right, every year Tracy Stahl puts together, our finance director puts together the budget schedule. And we have you adopt it. For this year, I want you to focus on the start date. For the first time, we are going to start in November with planning for our budget. Typically, it's in January. Several months ago, a couple council members, and I think council member Canal has led the charge of a desire to have a workshop meeting where we just sit around a table, eat some pizza, and just talk about city issues outside of council meeting. I would like to do that in November. We have a new council member that's been appointed to this board that will be with us for the upcoming year. The majority of the council is, you're coming up on your one-year anniversary. So I think it'll be good for us to sit down and have a more laid-back discussion in November about the vision for Alligan prior to us jumping into hardcore numbers in January. And having that discussion will kind of help us as we put the numbers together and we put the priorities together for our department heads on what they should be submitting and where their focus should be. But I do need you guys to approve this budget and I need you to enter these dates when city council meetings are into your calendar. We will try to remind council as we come up on them, but you are approving them tonight. You're agreeing to them tonight.
Can I get a motion to approve? Oh, do you want to have, go ahead.
I have a discussion of, has everybody looked at these dates and is there any conflicts? Because I have a conflict on the start date of November 15th.
On the November 15th?
Yes.
Are you a hunter?
No, I'm going to visit a college with my son.
That's also a good idea. But we picked the November 15th, the department heads are like, Joel, that's opening day, opening season. I'm like, I don't think anyone on council h-. I'm like, I don't think anyone on council hunts, I could be wrong, but, yeah, we can move that around. We can pick a different date than that. I just want to have it outside the rush of department heads present. And then, that following Saturday, you guys are expected to digest everything you heard the night before, and have your own ideas. I'm trying to spread it out, so we can move that into December if needed.
And, just to refresh my memory, the ones that we are here for would be the November, whatever we decide, and the 23rd and the 24th of January, right? And the rest is department heads, not us? Because I, yeah, okay.
So, you're the 23rd and 24th of January, and then, we bring you back on the April 8th? Or, can March 23rd, is it, March 23rd, April 8th, and April 9th is when you guys come back?
So, the 22nd, is that an option for people, if we move it out a week?
That's fine for me.
Sorry to put everybody on the spot, but I'd rather. Patrick is a maybe, his wife is his calendar.
I'm not going anywhere for Thanksgiving week, and that's open, so.
Yeah? Patrick. All right, okay, so, can we?
You can make a motion to adopt the schedule with the November 15th being November 22nd.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve that 2027 budget schedule with the November 15th moved to the 22nd?
I'll make a motion, then we approve it with those changes.
Okay.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. 11E4 is a request to approve PO 26 dash 0841 to Ace Excavating and Gravel in the amount of $20,000 for the demolition of 201 Race Street.
Thank you, Mayor. For the past several years, we've been working with the property owner at 201 Race Street to fix many code violations at their property. These are building violations. The roof has completely caved in on the porch. The roof over the main part of the house has completely failed and is leaking water into the interior, which is ruining the interior. The drywall is degraded on the inside, the electric is, is not up to code. The foundation is crumbling. That is also for the garage as well. As we are going through this process, the owner passed away last year. It's currently in probate. Earlier this year, City Council directed staff to begin the process of doing code enforcement, which could possibly end up in a demolition state on a handful of properties. We already have a court order to demolish this house. So, I told council, we will go out for bid. We went out for bid on this house. The bids came in on Friday. The low bid is $20,000 per your packet, or per your report that you got this afternoon. And so, we're now asking council, do you want us to move forward with demolishing this house? So, you've received a copy of the report this afternoon regarding this. However, this property should not be new to anybody on council. We've discussed this ad nauseam for the past two years. You've received the copy of the court order in the packet today. You've seen that before. You've gotten the bid, you see that. And then, you also see the bid tabulation sheet. The low bid was 20,000, the next highest was 21. Then, it was 34,550, then it was 36,000, and then, the high was 303,475. So, we're going with the low bid of 20,000 is our recommendation. This would require a budget transfer from our general fund.
Yeah, I think this property has been talked about since 2020.
I believe you're correct.
And can, can you remind, because, do we then go after to be reimbursed? I know we talked about this, and I.
So, the process would work this way. We go ahead, move forward with the demolition, we have the court order to do that. All costs associated with the demolition will be placed on the person's taxes. It's a very high likelihood that the taxes will not be paid. So, the county will make us whole on that tax bill. So, the county will pay us, you know, essentially $20,000 plus fees. And then, after three years of not paying taxes in the state of Michigan, it will become a tax foreclosure sale. So, the county will put the property up for sale. And then, the county will get a price for that, and anything that doesn't cover the tax bill, the city would have to pay back to the county. So, it's, in the City of Alligan, historically, the city's always had to pay the county back after those three years. So, we do get it for a bit, but not, but we do have to reimburse the county. That is the process.
The home's not boarded up or anything right now, is it? I'm just saying, it, it sounds unsafe.
Yeah, it is locked.
Okay, but.
There's a padlock on it.
I mean, that is a possibility of an unsafe structure, sitting and degrading more.
Yeah, last, last summer, we did work with the Sheriff's Department, the court system, to evict a few, what I'm going to define as squatters that were living there without permission.
Are there other questions of staff? All right, oh, let's, can I get a motion to approve PO 26 dash 0841?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase order.
Support, support. It's been moved and supported. Discussion amongst council. Anyone have any comments they would like to make, questions?
And, you know, I look forward to us cleaning up a lot of the areas.
All right. Okay, we have a motion on the table, I don't see any further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. All right, moving down to Agenda Item Number 13 is the second public comment period of the evening. If you have a public comment for items on, on the agenda, please approach the podium. I am seeing no public comment, so I will move down to Agenda Item Number 14, which is communication from the city manager.
I have nothing to share with council tonight.
Wow, all right. All right, Agenda Item Number 15 is roundtable discussion from council and mayor, and councilperson Canales. Start with you.
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Hooker.
Councilmember Walker and I had our coffee with council on Friday. Nobody really visited, we did, we did visit with Mr. Gum, but we, but there was, we threw out there that if any other council would be interested for festive Fridays, we would like to have hot cocoa here in the hall to distribute. We both said we are happy to do it on the 12th. The 5th is the parade, so it would be after that, and then, the 19th, Santa will be here. So, if anybody's interested, please let myself or councilmember Walker know, and then, we'll coordinate with Joel. And I think that's all I have, thanks.
All right. Councilmember Clark.
Well, on that note, last year, the Chamber of Commerce did free gift wrapping, and I don't know if they're gonna do it again this year, but that could be a really good way for us to also outreach and get people to come in, you know, because then, we're giving them gift wrapping, and we could discuss things with them as we're wrapping their gifts. I don't know, it was just an idea Will and I threw around, and I kind of wanted to see if anybody else thought that was a good idea. That's if the chamber doesn't do it, of course.
Yeah. Councilmember Westover.
Thank you, Mayor. Has there been any updates on the rental ordinances?
Sure, yeah, so, the group has been meeting. They're gonna meet again in two Tuesdays, and we hope to bring in ordinance forward for City Council to discuss, you know, probably, you know, before Thanksgiving.
All right. You go ahead, sorry, Will, go ahead. Oh, all right. Mayor Proton hands.
Nothing.
All right. I will take the December 19th for whether it's wrapping, or cocoa, or all of the above. So, put me down for that. I'd like to be with Santa, that sounds fun. And then, this is my last meeting, running the meeting as mayor, unless, at the next meeting, we just want to keep this going. I am willing to do that, but we do have to do nominations at the first meeting in November. And I don't know if Peter, you were, what you're, were willing to do.
I'm willing to do either role, neither role, no, so.
Yeah, I'm flexible too, and, but just wanted to mention that to everybody, so, that will be on the next agenda. And with that, at 6:54, I will adjourn the meeting.